Live stream going.
All right, you should be good to go Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hinkley. Seven oh two, in March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, the town of New England Conservation Commission meeting. Ms. Gibbons, please call the roll.
Ben Ancona the third. John Bashan.
Here.
John Kessa Santa. Bernie Deck Conway.
Here.
Alan Paskevich.
Here.
Andrea Seidel.
Here.
Jeff Wagner.
Here.
Okay, point of order, I'm going to see Bernadette Conway, in place of Commissioner Casa Santa, this evening. Commissioner Casa Santa did send me his regrets, will not be making this evening, so. Vice Chairman Wagner, if you don't mind, you'll be the Secretary, Acting Secretary for this evening, is that okay?
Yes.
All right, just a heads up, okay, and I'd like to make a one change to the agenda. I'd like to move all business application twenty twenty-two dash oh two. At seventy-seven ninety-three Payne Road, move that up in front of new business, we do have a lengthy application. In front of us under new business and. At courtesy of the applicant, I'd like to brief, finish that application first. Is anyone on the commission have, we need to vote on that, that agenda change, is anybody on the commission oppose that last minute change?
Mr. Chairman, you should have a motion and a vote for that.
Yes, I'm ready, there's no, there's no other. Acquiesce, so I would like to put a motion to move. Item six A in front of new business item five. May I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Paskevich, Ms. Gibbons, please call the roll.
John Bashans.
Yes.
Bernadette Conway.
Yes.
Alan Paskevich.
Yes.
Andrea Seidel. Jeff Wagner.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, motion passes. Moving on to back to item three, public participation of non-agenda items. Mr. Hinkley, is anyone on the line, each member of the public is limited to two minutes.
There are a few people in the room, but nobody has their hand raised Chairman.
Okay, then we shall proceed, moving on to acceptance of minutes. Minutes from the Newton Conservation Commission meeting from February the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Are there any additions and corrections to the commission? The none scanning the group. May I have a motion to accept the Newton Conservation Commission meeting minutes from February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two?
So moved, Commissioner Conway.
Thank you, Commissioner Conway, may I have a second?
Second, John Bashan.
Um, thank you, before we vote, final discussion. Commissioner Paskevich, if you feel comfortable, you've read the minutes, you were absent at the last February meeting, you feel comfortable, you can vote this evening?
Yes, I read them thoroughly. They were very long and extensive with some of the public participation, I just wanted to comment on that, I think we well. Went over the two minutes by probably forty-five minutes, I hope that doesn't happen again.
Okay, so moved. All in favor, voice vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Disapprove against abstentions. Minutes passed. Five zero, Ms. Gibbons, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to. Our change, moving on to old business application twenty twenty-two dash oh two, construction activity at seventy-seven and ninety-three Payne Road applicant. SBS Realty LLC owner McBride Properties Incorporated, contact Brandon Handfield, practicing engineer, is the applicant present, Mr. Hinkley?
I believe he's in the room, yes.
Yes, we are.
Maybe I'll go ahead step forward, please?
Sure will, for the record, Brandon Handfield, professional engineer with Yentik River Consultants, representing the African SBS Realty LLC. I'm happy to share my screen, if the commission wishes, I know you have a long agenda, or I can simply give a description of the where we stand since the last meeting. I'll leave it up to the chair in this case, what you'd like me to do for detail on this application?
Please advise or any changes or note, or note quotations since the last meeting, the changes since the last meeting, let's talk from the February meeting.
Okay, I'll just quickly share my screen, there have not been. Excuse me, yep. So just in summary, again, we're here representing SBS Realty LLC, the property in question is seventy-seven and ninety-three Payne Road. Since the last meeting, we have revised the plans to address all staff comments. And also submitted a planning and zoning application, or a town plan and zoning application. That also incorporates the same plans that you have in front of you, so. The changes to the plans are relatively minor and technical in nature. Some of them address Mr. Hinkley's comments related to conservation easement plan, or conservation easement labeling. So just to refresh everyone's memory. At the. Southerly side of our site, we have inland wetlands that are delineated by the town, as well as our soil scientists. Along those inland wetlands, we're proposing a series of native tree plantings, and what we're also proposing. Are a conservation seed mix, what we did is added that pattern to the the site plan, so that you can see the area where we're proposing that conservation seed mix. It's shown here in yellow. And we added that to each of the plans, as well as to the landscape. Plan sheet number six. Sorry, sheet number five, so you can see the same pattern on sheet number five, and we added that to our plant list as well, so you can see. The specification that we're calling out, which is the New England Conservation and Wildlife Seed Mix. That contains native seed, native grass seeds as well as shrubs. So that entire area will be seeded with a conservation mix, in addition to the trees, or the screening trees that we're proposing. Within the filter bed itself, we added the pattern for the detention basin for moist sites. Conservation mix, it's a very similar mix, but it has more appropriate seed mixes and shrub mixes for a more moist site, so. That those two items address Mr. Hinkley's comment with relate, related to the seed mixes, we also labeled the conservation easement. That is located to our southwest corner, so this property line here. In orange is our property line, and this area is in a conservation, conservation in favor of the town of Newington. So we labeled that conservation easement, as well as the volume and page. Other revisions we made were also minor in nature, we addressed the town engineers' comments related to minor drainage. Clarified a few things in the stormwater management report, but in general, there's no substantial change to the plan itself, the building's the same. The sidewalks are the same, the parking and the access are generally the same. And our impervious coverages have not changed, so in general, what you have in front of you today is a pretty much the same plants that you had before, we just. Addressed all the comments, brushed it up and tightened everything up. To the point where we think we've addressed everything the town has in terms of questions, and. If there's any additional questions, the the commission may have, I'm happy to answer them now.
Thank you, Mr. Handfield, I do have two questions, one I neglected to ask you. Last month's meeting is relative to the erosion control plan, specifically in the southern part of the property there. And specifically, what time of year do you plan to kick this project off? In maintaining that erosion plan during inclement weather, so on and so forth.
So the the plan is to start construction as soon as possible, so likely summer of twenty twenty-two. With an anticipated completion in twenty twenty-three, so construction will likely carry through one winter season. During that season, we have sufficient controls to make sure that we can contain. Any unstabilized soils during that period, so our our site is completely ringed. In silt fence from street all the way to the back. We have a number of soil stockpiles that will be protected with silt fence. And towards the rear of our site, we have a silt trap that will be installed, just upgrade. Of our sedimentation chamber and filter bed, and that that silt trap can accommodate our exposed construction site for the duration of construction. It will contain the water and allow salts and sediments to fall out of the concentrated flow. Before discharging to the grassy area and vegetated area and catch basin system that exists to the rear of our site, so. We can accommodate all construction seasons for that one year period.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to throw it over to the rest of the commissioners, that's the old questions that I had, Mr. Hinkley, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out as well, just if the commission isn't aware. The applicants and contractors do have to post a erosion sediment control bond with the town. Prior to the start of construction, so we make sure that the silt fence and all every, their E and S measures are installed properly. And then they're periodically inspected as well throughout the construction process.
Thank you. Any other commissioner would have a, have a question for the applicant on this application? I see no one have their hand up. That is the case. Mr. Hinkley, is the application complete?
Yes, it is.
Oh, and there is one additional condition, Mr. Handfield, relative to the plantings. There is a special to make sure that the. That the plantings take hold, I believe, can you show that last condition to make sure that the applicant?
It's up on the screen now, I did send this to him yesterday as well.
Mr. Handfield, does the applicant acquiesce to this condition?
Yes, we do, we have reviewed the standard conditions as well as this one, and we can accommodate.
Okay, thank you, sir. Acting Secretary Wagner may have a motion on application twenty twenty-two dash oh two, construction activity at seventy-seven. And ninety-three Payne Road applicant SBS Realty LLC owner McBride Properties Incorporated, contact Brandon Handfield. Practicing engineer.
Yep, so move to approve application twenty twenty-two dash two, with the ten standard conditions of the following additional conditions. All right, subsequent to the tree plan inspection of the planet area should be conducted by Arboris to document the placement and vigor. Of the tree plant in the regulated area, addition yearly inspections of the plant area should be conducted during the growth season. For at least three subsequent years, as search survival rates. Importance documenting the findings of the inspections, including presence of any invasive species, shall be provided. Through the local inland wetland agency no later than December thirty-first of each year, if mortality rates of the plants exceed fifteen percent, the plants shall be replaced. That's all I can see right now.
Yeah, that is the only extra condition.
Okay.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I'll second it, John Bashan.
Seconded by Commissioner Bashan, final discussion. Ms. Gibbons, please call the roll.
John Bashans.
Yes.
Bernie Deck Conway.
Yes.
Alan Paskevich.
I'm not sure if I'm allowed to vote, since I wasn't at the meeting, could you please address that Chairman Sidell?
The question is, have you read the plan, you're free to abstain, Commissioner Paskevich. If you don't feel comfortable, we have reviewed the prints and the prior minutes and the. The drawings of the plan, you are.
Eligible. Okay, I I have done all those. Protocol as you spoke to, so I will vote yes.
Thank you. Andrea Seidel.
Yes.
Jeff Wagner.
Yes.
Five, yes.
Hey, thank you.
Oh. It looks like Ben Ancona is on the phone, is on a meeting.
Okay. Noted that, that he's been seated, it's okay, I guess the motion passes unanimously, Commissioner Corn, you have any objections or wish to?
I just wanted to say in the record, I've been here since seven twelve.
All right, so note in the minutes, Ms. At the. Stevens, that the Commissioner Corn was seated at seven twelve, and you may vote, Mr. Ancona, you were at the last meeting, do you wish to vote on this application?
Yes.
So we have a yes, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I believe that's six nothing, Ms. Ms. Gibbons.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck, Mr. Handfield.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, moving back up to section five, new business application twenty twenty-two dash oh three. To remove and replace an existing hundred by fifty foot sport court in the regulated area. At thirty West Hartford Road, Royal Villas condos applicant Royal Villas condo association. Contact Heather Klinger, is the applicant president, Mr. Hinkley?
I believe she is.
Can she, can they step forward and identify themselves for the record?
Yeah. Go ahead.
My name is Heather Klinger, I'm representing the Royal Villas condominium association as president of the association.
Okay, so do you have a brief presentation going over the project for the for the commission to review and discuss?
We currently have a one hundred by fifty sport court here at Royal Villas. That we would, the scope of the work entails tearing up and repaving the existing sport court. There are no changes to the size of the court, we would like it to remain the original footprint. And any environmental areas that may be disturbed will be planted with conservation seed mix. Our contractor, who is also here this evening on the phone. Will be responsible for identifying and marking out all public utilities through call before you dig. Removing and hauling away the existing sport court. Adding processed stone to regrade the existing base, engineering and staking out the area to set the grade. Fine grade and compact base and pave and compact one and a half inch binder course using class one by two minutes concrete. And pave and compact one and a half inch top course using class two by two minutes concrete. We estimate that the duration of this project would be two to three weeks from start to finish. This excludes the line painting and removal of the fence around the court and the reinstallation of the fence. The fence surrounding the sport court would be removed prior to the work starting. A fence will be installed after the work is done, and again, any disturbed areas would be reseeded with a conservation seed mix.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I can just point out here, there's a small map up on the the screen. Why this is before you is, is this little corner is actually in the wetland proper. And the rest is in the buffer area, that's. That's the way it was constructed, we had a discussion with the condominium about possibly relocating it, and they just chose to just. Replace it in its existing place. It's mostly grass area in that area now, there there's a, you know, there's a tree line out in here, they're not going to be taking down any trees or anything either.
Now. One issue, I would like to have that, that gray line labeled as the wetland limit bound. You know, on that first line on the right, and then the line on the left would be the hundred foot buffer, I would like to have that.
Correct.
There's nothing wrong with a hand sketch, but I would like to have. That labeled on the drawing to be clear for the for the record, that the line on the right is the wetland bound, and the line on the left is the hundred foot buffer.
Yep, I will be able to label that for them, yes, for the next meeting.
Now, you you did, Ms. Klinger, mention that that fence is going to be coming down completely. First, right, and then you're going to be. Breaking the asphalt that's there and then hauling that out?
Yes, the fence would be removed in order for the work to be done with our, by our contractor.
And then put in exact same postings, are you going to try to save those pilings, are you going to have new pilings there, or? When you, for the post, for the, for the poles, for the fence, are those going to be pulled out, put new in, or?
We are going to, we are going to try to use the existing poles that are there and pilings, we may. Be installing a new fence with those pilings, we have not made that decision yet, but a fence will be installed, our intent is to use the original. Pilings for the fence.
Okay. What type of erosion control, is there wetness over there in that, in the area on the right, is there any type of erosion control that your contractor is going to be putting in place? Because that is holding, I assume that area is holding water. It may dry out in the summer, but is there any type of erosion control on the right hand side there? On that, yes, in that area?
Yeah, we'll, we'll put that on, I believe the contractor is going to be installing some silt fence there.
And our contractor has joined us by phone, and he can answer that question.
May he identify himself for the record?
Yeah. Kyle Constantine with Constantine Paving and Ceiling.
What was that name, sir, I didn't quite get that for the record?
Kyle Constantine.
Thank you, sir.
So yeah, we can install silt fence. At the perimeter of the wetlands, the court, the court is slightly elevated. So we won't, you know, be disturbing anything but where the court is.
Okay. But like I said, some, I think erosion control measure, in case anything with the heavy rain, so on and so forth, there is some sort of buffer there. To shield the wetland from any type of erosion, whatnot, soil removal, that kind of thing, so I just want to be, make note of that.
And we'll, we'll get that added to the plan.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rashad, you have a question?
Yeah, just a couple of things, first of all, on the agenda, the address is not on the, on there. And it is in the application, so I know where it is, of course, but, and also, just to reiterate.
It is on the agenda, John. Hartford Road, it's at thirty West Hartford Road.
Yes, I see it on the application.
It's on the agenda as well.
It is on the agenda?
Yes.
Do you have the amended agenda?
I don't know which agenda I have, I got the one that came in the mail, so.
Right, she sent out an amended agenda, it says amended agenda, I think she sent that via email, so that that's what the correction was.
Oh, okay, not a big deal anyway, not a big deal anyway, but um. Or maybe it is, but that's why it was corrected, but just want to reiterate the the third bullet point. Actually, the second bullet point, remove and haul away existing court, and that should include any sub base or anything that there's no. There's no dumping on, in the wetlands, you know, even leveling off the ground or anything with that existing process could be a temptation, but. It should be noted that that should be removed as well.
Yes, I did discuss that.
Noted, I just wanted to point it out.
Yeah, I did discuss that with the, with the condo association when they made the application.
Yes, we are aware of that and have discussed that with our contractor, everything will be removed from the site.
Good, thank you, that's it. Any other questions, some commissioners, I I've exhausted my questions, does anyone else wish to? Engage the applicant? I'm seeing none, their hand up. So we shall proceed, so with those corrections to the map, Ms. Klinger, with your contractor, and. Will be prepared to vote on this at the next month's meeting.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time this evening.
Moving on to section five B, application twenty twenty-two dash oh four. For a wetland map amendment at three fifty-nine Church Street and three twenty-one Tremont Street rear applicant and owner AA. Donofria Building and Development LLC, contact is Alan Banjivani, I see that the applicant is present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Alan Banjivani, I'm a licensed land surveyor in the state of Connecticut. Representing AA Donofria Building and Development Company, on the application before you, I have with me as well, Andy Donofria, principal with AA Donofria. Building and development. Eric, if I could share my screen?
Absolutely, you should be good to go, you can just stop me.
Okay, so what I put up here is a rendered version of our wetland map amendment plan. When we started this project, we were looking at the site doing the survey. And realized that what is on the town map really doesn't reflect the actual conditions in the field. We've hired a soil scientist, David Lord, to do an investigation, wetland identification and flagging of the property. And we found significant differences, and because of that fact, we've applied to this, to this commission. For a wetland map amendment, and in talking with. Mr. Hinkley, it's my understanding that this will be scheduled for a public hearing. On April nineteenth. So that we can do the formal process of the wetland map amendment, and at that point, I would have. David Lord, the soil scientist here to prepare his presentation and report his findings.
So, and just so we're clear, Mr. Chairman, all math amendments do require the public hearing.
Understood, on, just as a description, Mr. Banjivani, I assume the red line is the current town map, the red line represents that. And then your purple area is what you're proposing.
Correct.
All right. Now, one question I will have, and obviously it's a reduction in. Acreage, go ahead.
Yeah, if I can give you some areas, the total parcel is fifteen point nine seven acres. By the town mapping, the wetlands is three point three four acres, by the soil scientists, it's two point five nine acres of inland wetland. And that also includes the water course area within the property boundaries.
So it seems a little, some areas have expanded, like the area on the right has been tremendously reduced, obviously on the rights of the screen. And on the left, it appears that there is more than what is on the map, on the New England map, is that, am I interpreting your map correctly?
That is correct, though you have to look back in the early seventies when these maps were created. This was probably at the tail end, this is an old farm field, this was a dairy farm, part of a dairy farm. And these were open fields at the time, they use the Soil Conservation Service mapping and things like that to determine the wetlands, they didn't do individual field investigations. So that's why you have different areas. Also, during the mid-sixties, early to mid-sixties, there was a sewer truck line. Put through the property from Church Street, it kind of zigzags through the property, goes in between the wetland areas and exits the northwest. Towards what was the Red Rock Development, Tremont Street and that area. So that might have altered some of the original conditions prior to what we see today.
Now, I noticed you took a lot of, one question I will ask at the public hearing. Is relative to the borings, there's quite a few flags on the map, but how many borings ratio reflects the borings and what basically established your. Those purple boundaries, I'd be intrigued to know if at the, at the public hearing. What it basically established that via borings, via the redox soil that he brought into. Any type of graphical, what those borings looked like, just to note that for the record, a substantiation for the, for the new.
Certainly, certainly, our, our soil scientist, David Lord, will be here to present his findings. Explain the procedures and methods he used to actually identify the soil types. You know, approximation of how many actual borings done with a hand auger, spade and auger, to actually come up with that, those limits of flags.
Okay, do other commissioners have a question for Mr. Banjivani at this time? I'm seeing none. Mr. Hinckley, I think we have to take a vote for the public hearing. Is that? Was that automatic for something like this?
No, you can go ahead and take the vote. If you just want to do it at the end of all the new business like you would normally do, that's perfectly fine. Don't wait till he does the presentation. Or I can go to it now if that's what you'd like.
Do the, let's do it separate because they can be separately. So let's do a vote for the public hearing.
All right.
Application twenty twenty two dash oh four for a wetland map amendment at three fifty nine Church Street and three twenty one Tremont Avenue rear. Applicant and owner AA Dona Freya Building and Development LLC. Contact John Allen Banjiani, excuse me, Mr. Secretary.
Motion is pursuant to section fifteen point seven of inland wetlands and water courses regulations and public hearings is required for all wetland map amendments. The public hearing for application twenty twenty two dash oh four shall be scheduled for April nineteenth, twenty twenty two.
Thank you. May I have your second?
Second, Commissioner Paschke.
Second, Commissioner Paschke. Ms. Gibbons, please call the roll.
Benan Kona the third?
Yes.
John Bashand?
Yes.
Bernadette Conway?
Yes.
Alan Paschke?
Yes.
Andrea Sado?
Yes.
Jeff Wagner?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, section C, application number twenty twenty two dash oh five for construction of single family homes in the upland review area at three fifty nine Church Street and three twenty one Tremont Street rear. Applicant and owner AA Dona Freya Building and Development LLC. Contact Alan Banjiani.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, my name is Alan Banjiani. I'm a licensed land surveyor. My office address at one seventy Payne Road here in Newington, representing AA Building and AA Donarvia Building and Development LLC. I have with me as well Andy Donarvia, principal with AA Donarvia Building and Development LLC. The plan that I have before you is a compilation of the set of plans that we submitted with the application. The purpose of my presentation at this point is to help the commission identify whether this is viewed by the commission as a significant activity and whether a public hearing should be held in regards to this application. What we're proposing on a fifteen point nine acre site is a twenty-three lot, R twenty open space subdivision. The subject property on the east is bounded by Church Street. On the south, Winslow Drive, the Winslow Drive subdivision with stub roads of Alston Road and Rock Hole Lane coming from the south and terminating at the property line to the west and to the north, you have the Tremont Street subdivisions and the Edward Street subdivision to the north. So it's basically a leftover parcel of farmland that's surrounded by residential use on all sides.
And we're proposing. Are you presenting something? Excuse me, are you presenting a map of the project?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Yeah, go ahead. You'll have to take the screen back, Alan. Sorry.
Okay. So maybe you're gonna back up just a little bit, just to, sorry, sir.
There we go.
There we go. Yes.
Okay, my apologies. To start over again, so the subject property is fifteen point nine seven acres. It is currently forested, heavily forested with mature growth, some mature growth trees on the property. It's bounded on the east by Church Street, on the south by the Winslow Drive subdivision. Those houses back up against our southerly property line, two roads that stub into the property, Alston Road and Rock Hole Lane from Winslow Drive towards the property line. To the west and to the north are residential subdivisions. To the west, you have the Tremont Street subdivision, Rock Hole, I'm sorry, Red Rock Development. And then to the north, the Edward Street, to the rear of the Edward Street properties, and there's some rare property in there that encompasses a section of Rock Hole Brook. Our proposal is to request of this commission and the planning and zoning commission approval of a twenty-three lot open space R twenty subdivision with a road starting on Rock Hole Lane, entering into the property and then turning to the east and terminating in cul-de-sac. It's about a thousand feet of new road to accommodate the construction of, again, twenty-three single family homes. Twenty-two would actually be off the cul-de-sac. There would be one lot fronting on Church Street. Property will be serviced by MDC Sewer and Water. The sewer currently exists on the site in the mid sixties, mid to early sixties. The MDC constructed a trunk line through the property. It starts on Church Street, comes into the property, hundred and fifty feet or so, goes to the north, goes back to the west, and then goes all the way south of the brook to a manhole, and then goes in the northwest to what was the Red Rock Development. We'll be tying into that sewer. Our proposal is to have no direct impact to the wetland with the exception of our sewer crossing, which is about point one seven acres. It's an area about twenty by twenty-five feet. That would be a temporary disturbance, just to allow us to install the sewer to cross this finger of wetlands here, north of our proposed roadway. Upon completion of that sewer, which would probably take one to two weeks to do, it would be restored to its original condition. Our proposal, as in our twenty subdivision, open space subdivision, is to dedicate a good portion of the land to the town so it is preserved in perpetuity and never to be developed in the future. There's some slight changes to the plan that I have in front of you, primarily in the open space area. And that's because of comments we received since our original application from the town. We've been working closely with Mr. Hinckley, the planning department and engineering. A lot of the comments generally are technical in nature. There were some requests by the staff to make some modifications to enhance the open space. So we've enlarged the open space from what was originally submitted. This larger section here is five point two acres. And then the brook, as it leaves Church Street, there's another area about six tenths of an acre that we're, originally we're proposing to conservation easement would now, now be encumbered or be deeded to the town as an open space. Our proposal is to clear what is necessary for the construction of the houses and reasonable yards. We've designed this so that the road and improvements work very well with the existing grades of the site. There's not a significant amount of earthwork involved here. One of the reasons we did propose connections from Rock Hole Lane only and not connecting Alston Road in is when that was approved in the eighties, I, I believe it was looked at in a two dimensional perspective that, oh, we've got a farmland that's not developed now, we can stub a road into it. But when you actually look at the topography, this is some fifteen to seventeen feet, this existing cul-de-sac above the grade where the road, where my hand is shown here in this area. The grade is so steep that we would have to put in about twenty thousand yards of fill to make that transition work. That's contrary to the way the subdivision regulations are. We should be working with the contour of the land, and this allows us to do that. We're very happy with the way this works. It's minimal, again, except minimal earthwork. This is consistent with how the land was developed around it in the, in the neighboring areas. We are proposing minimal work within the upland review areas. The area where the wetlands is closest to the road, this would all be open space. We've delineated that with this yellow dashed line around the perimeter of that proposed open space. On the corners of lot, on the corner of lots three, four, and five, we are proposing a small conservation easement so that we can maintain the minimum required lot areas. One of the things we're proposing to do here, different than we've done in other subdivisions in the past, behind lots three, four, and five, and along the open space on the sides, we're proposing to install not just placards on posts, but install a split rail cedar fence along those lines so that there's not only a physical barrier and an aesthetic barrier, one that will be attractive and it should blend in with the natural environment behind it. But on the fence posts, we're gonna have placards that alert the homeowners that this is a town open space and not to be disturbed and things like that. So language of that nature will be worked out with the town staff. But I think it provides a good protective measure for the town open space. We've designed a drainage system to work in compliance with the town regulations, providing stormwater quality management. Some of the staff comments were, there's an existing drainage outfall in this area from the Winslow Drive development. If we could do some work to improve that outfall, so we're gonna combine that with the proposed roadway outfall, put a level spreader in there. But in general, the plans, as you see them, is what we've proposed with some minor technical modifications that we will have submitted back to the town over the next couple of days. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We don't feel personally that this is a significant activity, but I'm not a commission member. And that's your purview. So if you have any questions or comments, please do.
Okay, I will start. The Commissioner Bashand has his hand up. Please, Commissioner Paschke, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Question for Mr. Banjiani. Does the open space, making it an open space subdivision, does that allow to reduce the size of the lots? Because you referenced R twenty zone three times. And I don't see any of the lots that lot, that size.
So it is in our, the property is currently zoned R twenty. When you do an R twenty subdivision, it allows you to go to R twelve lot sizing. And what that does, that allows you to compress the lots to the next size down while preserving the more significant natural features, preserving the wetlands, large stands of trees, things like that. So, yes, there is. Now, there's a, for your benefit, there's a calculation that we must provide the town for the planning and zoning department, commission to determine the number of lots. And by that calculation, this property would be entitled to twenty-four lots. We felt that the twenty-three lots that we have proposed would allow us to provide a development that would not have any significant impact. If we were to create another lot in there, I think you'd probably be hard pressed to get a reasonable yard, unusable land around the house. So we stopped it at twenty-three.
So, so it doesn't have anything to do with it being an open space subdivision? It's just you're saying that's built into the, into the zoning requirements? It's not exactly a minimum requirement?
No.
Okay. And then as far as the, I'll just throw this out there right now. But as far as the, the public hearing, I think it's significant enough that it probably does warrant the, the public hearing. That's just my, my opinion. That's it for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Bashan. Commissioner Paschke.
Yes, I'd like to expand on the zoning portion, even though we're not the zoning commission. But regarding this open space subdivision, I read on the cover sheet, I have in front of me, of the plans that there's, there is an allowed distance, side yard distance of no more than ten feet. Is that, is that correct, Alan Banjiani?
So in both the R twenty and the R twelve, we have a minimum side yard requirement of ten feet. It doesn't vary whether it's a quarter acre lots or the half acre lots, the twelve thousand or the twenty thousand square foot lot. The minimum side yard requirement stays the same, just as the building line and rear yard stay the same. The building line from the street is thirty-five feet and the rear yard requirement is thirty in both zones.
So, kind of rephrase part of what I was saying. Is that, does that mean it's a total, total of twenty side yard, twenty feet side yard, ten on each side?
Correct.
Okay. Second question of raising information. The open space area, I don't know the regulations for open space in town in New England. Is that open space going to be open to the public or the residents to walk on?
It will be. Okay. And it has, it's gonna have several feet of frontage along the proposed Rock Hole Lane extension so that cars could park on the side of the road and, you know, walk and enjoy that. It could be used for educational purposes or, you know, just a nature hike.
Yeah, I find that a benefit. Thank you.
Commissioner Bashad, do you have another question?
No, I'm sorry. I just lowered my hand.
Okay. Are your questions complete, Commissioner Paschke?
Yes, they are. Thank you, Chairman.
All right. Mr. Banjiani, if I understood you correctly, so all the runoff from these homes will be handled by MDC, basically by this extension you're putting in here, this pipe that's going into the, the wetland, that's gonna tie into an existing MDC line? Can you explain that?
Yeah, let me, let me clarify that. So the sanitary sewer will exit, that we're gonna construct in the road is gonna tie into a trunk line sewer, sanitary sewer that exists now that the MDC put in in the sixties. What you're asking, or maybe we've got confused here, is the storm drainage is gonna be totally separate. It's gonna exit just on the bend of the road. It's gonna go into a level spreader. We're gonna combine that level spreader with existing town drainage that discharges at this point. And then it'll flow overland with the energy dissipated towards the Rock Hole Brook. Prior to exiting, prior to exiting, of course, we'll have our water quality structure and things like that, so that we're treating the water before it exits.
Is that on the plan? Have you said that with those two level spreaders? Is that on the blue, the Kocky Insurance Blueprint? Is that on there?
That is not on there. That is right where my little pointer is. That is a condition that we agreed to with the town engineer. I think it was yesterday, if not Friday afternoon, so I haven't had a chance to modify the plan. Those modified plans will be to the town in the next day or so. We're ninety-nine percent complete with them. And that detail will be on there before we come to our next meeting.
So, okay, thank you. So everything from the cul-de-sac is gonna go from right to left and into that?
It is. The, the grade goes from the cul-de-sac in a westerly direction. The low point of the road is right where the storm drainage crosses and and just in the location of that outfall.
And where does that outfall will go into the wetland again and across the greenish area there that you have open space?
So it's gonna start, it's gonna go across upland before it actually enters into the wetland area. So there's gonna be an area of probably thirty to forty feet, depending on the actual detail of the level spreader of upland's grassed area before it actually gets to the wetland. And that's in this area here.
Okay. And then, once it gets to that area, it's gonna flow to the west?
It will flow to the west. It's gonna, there's a natural swell, if you will, that actually goes in this direction. It's gonna take it probably to this bend in that general vicinity. It's gonna sheet flow at that point.
And what is that area like between, before it gets to the bend there? What is the topography in that area?
So the edge of the wetlands is really, in this area, is really a drop off. It
Is it a wooded area? Is it wooded?
It's all wooded. The entire site is wooded. Up in this area, south of Alston to Rock Hole, there are, there's a lot of invasives in that area just adjacent to the existing housing lots. As you get past that edge condition, it, it's pretty much a forested area with a high canopy and a very clear forest floor. The, in this area where we have the bend in the road, it's a pretty clear delineation in the field where you've got a slope, a drop off from the upland to the wetlands. At the toe of the slope is the actual wetland area.
Is erosion gonna be an issue, Mr. Banjiani?
We, we don't believe it is because where we're exiting, our storm drainage is at the flatter area, and we are gonna do, beyond just discharge it at a flare end with a plunge pool, we're gonna provide a longer, more linear energy dissipator, level spreader, so that will even reduce the flows further. So there will be no erosion.
Councilor Rada, you have your hand up?
Sorry, just a quick question from Mr. Banjiani. With this area to the north, kind of northwest, being maintained for open space, I really like that idea. My question is, are there access points at the, at this point, right now? And hiking trails or walking trails, or will those be incorporated as part of the development? Or will that be the purview of the, of the town to create those or to maintain them?
So it is our proposal not to disturb the area? So it is our proposal not to disturb the area. Um, it is, again, a forested area that is, uh, has a open floor uh, to the forested area with a very high canopy that, that is very dense. So it doesn't allow a lot of vegetation to grow in there. Uh, I think, um, it's easy enough to navigate. Once we clear through the prickers and, and invasives at the end of Rock Hole Lane and construct the road, the area just north of the road is going to be planted with a seed mix specified by Mr. Lord. Uh, that is a, a grass mix that doesn't need to be mowed. It grows and then lays over, uh, and it's a self-fertilizing mix, if you will. Um, so what's going to happen is that's going to be like a, a, a meadow before you get to the forested wood, uh, wooded area. And, you know, other than, uh, bad weather, it, it's an easy to navigate piece of property that, uh, doesn't need a lot of alteration by uh, the town or the developer to make it accessible.
Hey, thank you. Commissioner Bishant, do you have your hand up?
Yes, a question for Mr. Banjavani. I could see the existing town storm drain or stormwater system discharges right in the close proximity to where the new developments, uh, spreader will be. Would there be any benefit to making a little more separation there?
Well, actually, this is what the town engineers requested, is we take a couple lengths of their pipe out, the existing pipe, and then create one level spreader to combine the both of them.
So that the two will be, the two will be combined there?
Yes. We won't bring the pipes together, but it's going to be one continuous level spreader that'll actually intercept both pipes.
And that was recommended by the town?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Paschek?
Um, yes. Speaking to the building lots themselves, is the terrain there flat or is it hilly to the point where the, uh, property areas listed at twenty-three lot will have to be stepped at each lot?
So the existing grade at the cul-de-sac is the high point, generally the high point. It's going to, the grade slopes down to Church Street. You know, from the cul-de-sac to Church Street is probably eight foot difference in elevation. So you've got a few foot, uh, behind the house on Lot Twelve, say, uh, to drop down to get towards Church Street. But generally, from the cul-de-sac to the west, the road slopes at a two to three percent grade. We have cross pitch on the lots on the, uh, south side of the road, Lots Fifteen through Twenty-three. Uh, the water gen- gently flows towards the west. We've got drains to intercept some of that rear yard water. Uh, so that as length builds up over lawns, it doesn't create, uh, uh, high velocities or erosion uh, and bringing that into the storm system. And then on the north side of the road, we're working with the grade and we basically created lots that are walkout so that we have, uh, minimal amount of sloping and grading required to make this happen. We're trying to use the houses in essence as a retaining wall. Uh, so if you look at the back of lots six and seven, there's generally no grading behind the house to speak of, other than to smooth it off for lawn. On lots nine through twelve, uh, there is some grading, but we're such a significant distance back. Um, and we're stopping at the sanitary sewer. Uh, it provides, it's an area to use, utilize some of the excess material, uh, on site.
So expanding on that a bit, are these homes going to be discharged, piped into a sanitary sewer, stormwater drain system in that new road?
So there, there's two different types of systems. So sanitary sewer has to go into a sanitary sewer that eventually gets to the MDC. Storm drainage is going to be handled differently, where you'd have footing drains that might connect into the drainage system. But as far as roof leaders, it's more acceptable to disperse that uh, at each house on splash pads than it is to concentrate that flow. And, and, uh, if you will, burden the drainage, the pipe drainage system. Uh, so we're proposing to use splash pads at the house to cover the rain gutters. Um, but again, two separate systems. You've got sanitary sewer for the building wastes. That goes to the MDC. And our storm drainage system, um, yes, you'll have yards, front yards that'll drain towards uh, the town system that we're going to construct in the road, uh, to the rear of, uh, the southerly lots that will be captured into a drainage system, uh, just like the rear of the houses on Winslow Drive, there's a drainage system that exists along, uh, their rear property line. On the north side of the road, those are going to sheet flow, the roofs and those yard areas will sheet flow towards the water course.
The, um, leaders that are going to drop down to these, uh, spreaders onto the lawn. It, the soils that are going to be there, are they good, are they original? Are you going to fill with a applicable soil to percolate?
So this is generally, and, and at our public hearing, uh, David Lord can speak to it better, but they're generally sandy soils in this area. Um, so we feel that a lot of the rainwater will actually percolate into the ground. Um, we don't have actual calculations, uh, done for that. We didn't test the soil for that. But it is a, a well-drained soil and we expect, uh, through the lawn areas, that a lot of that water will uh, work its way into the ground as, as opposed to just running all the way out to the brook.
Good to hear that it's not clay.
No, it's, it's a really, it's a sandier area.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just checking for anyone who has their hand up. Mr. Banjavani, so let's be clear on this map. Um, so this red dashed line is the hundred foot buffer line. Am I, am I correct in that?
Correct. Yes.
So we have, I guess, lot number two and then three, four, what will be in, well, two, three and four will be in the up, in the upland review area. Five and six are partials and then ten, eleven are also partials in the upland review area.
Yes.
Right. So, hmm, okay, just one, I have a question at this time. It's just, can you tell me more about the backsides of those, each of those lots? And that, like you said, is that going to flow northward? Or I'm just thinking, uh, what's the impact of, you know, those partials and especially three and four that are directly in the upland review?
So the land from the proposed road to the north is going to slow, you're going to have, from the houses is going to drain towards the road. And from the middle of the houses back will drain to the north, uh, eventually, uh, to the open space. The, um, the grade, uh, so we, we designed this so that the rear of these houses are walkouts so that we're making up the difference in elevation, the four to six feet from the front yard to the backyard in the foundation, from the front to the back of the foundation. And then you've got a gradual slope to get to existing grade on lot number three. Uh, on lot number four, uh, outside of the tree area, we're proposing to slope it a couple of feet in that area. Uh, five is a partial slope beyond the thirty foot required rear yard. Uh, six basically comes out to about natural grade, seven comes out to natural grade. Eight, yeah, we're massaging the contours, but we're not really filling. We're just braiding it for, uh, positive drainage. Lots ten and eleven, um, we're pushing the grade out some there to accommodate the usable rear yard of thirty feet. So we do have some filling in that area, but that, and that water will, uh, what doesn't percolate into the ground will flow over land to the wetlands and the water course. As it does now, we're not diverting the flow. We're not changing the patterns.
All right. So besides the fence, the, the, the two, the fence, is there any plantings you're planning? Is there one I need in the plan right now as far as the buffer in the upland review area? Are there any, anything planned as a?
So one of the things, um, and I haven't got the, the final plant list, but one of the things we're going to do along the edge condition that we create, where we actually clear the trees um, in areas that Mr. Lord feels may be susceptible to invasives growing. Uh, we may be planting some edge shrubbery like blueberry and things like that. Why, um, um, similar to we've done on other projects so that you create an edge condition where invasives aren't encouraged to grow.
Well, there are any other questions for commissioners? Uh, we have not heard from, Vice Chairman Wagner, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Um, the three and a four being like totally an upland review, which you said, we'll discuss that further. I saw, I have many questions right now.
Okay. Commissioner Conway?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Kona.
No questions right now. Thanks.
All right. So I guess the next order of business is whether the commission feels a public hearing is necessary for this application along with the map amendment. I recommend we do, given the number of buffer, I mean, abutting property owners. I think we need to, uh, set aside some time for them to Commissioner Bishant, do you have you, I think you said you were affirmative of that?
Yeah, on that, on that matter, yes. I had another point to, uh, raise, but, um,
Please go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I was going to ask, um, I was going to ask Eric, actually, we had our little seminar with the, um, land use, um, advocate or land use consultant there. And I forgot how we left it with the sidewalks. Are we still allowed to request the sidewalk by ourselves? Uh, I know there was some, they were kind of shying away from it on, in groups, but individually.
Here, here's what I would recommend. Um, you can request the sidewalk of the applicant. He can accept or deny. Um, and if you also review your, the, uh, presentation from the, from the course, which we can send out again, if, if you don't remember. Um, it would be in your best interest to do it alone, each individual commissioner that chooses to go to a sidewalk and do that. And then as you all know, you know, it shouldn't be discussed with anyone until a public hearing opens. So that's, you guys can request that and then you can try and move forward with that if the applicant is amenable. Again, I would recommend that you guys review that, that land use training thing at some point and move forward.
I believe I got an email with a link to it. So that was a, that's a good resource.
Yep.
Thank you.
So first things first, is the applicant open? We are. Was that, we asked to a sidewalk?
Yeah, we're fine with the sidewalk.
Now, my question, if that's amenable, what is the best place to act, uh, access? Obviously, there's a lot of butters along the south. I think there's not much access to the north. And it is a heavily wooded area. Um, we don't want to encroach on someone else's private property, but how does that logistically work if the commissioners so decide to?
So the easiest place to access this is through Rock Hole Lane. Uh, we have our public hearing notice sign posted there for planning and zoning. If the commission so desires, it'll be for this, uh, hearing as well. Um, that's the easiest place to do it. There are some prickles. It's fairly clear right now. Uh, as you get into April, later in April, it's going to start growing in and get a little thicker. Uh, but there's a lot of downed branches and things like that. There's a lot of neighborhood waste there that you have to wade through. You know, as, as typical in, in, in leftover farmland, the neighbors like to throw all their, uh, refuse and vegetation in there. So you got to be careful. Uh, but we're amenable. Uh, I'm not sure, based on your land use education, whether, uh, myself or the applicant can be there to, uh, walk people through it. Um, but if, if that's, uh, the case, I'd be happy to do that if we're allowed to do that.
Personally, I'm comfortable by myself, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, I think, um, we would access from Winslow Drive. That Rock Hole Lane is an existing dead end right now. I'm not that familiar.
It is. And you, you can park on that and, and be able to, again, walk straight past the pavement and get into the site.
Okay, cool. Okay. Thank you.
If the commissioners would like some stakes, let's say the center line of road or something, we'd be happy to put those out there, uh, because without some reference, you may not know what you're looking at. And, you know, you go too far, you're on the neighbor's property where the vast.
Right. I want to avoid that. I'm knowing any trespassing. So if you could do that, that'd be fine. I, I
Yeah, that would be helpful.
We'll have that done in the next week.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, um.
Uh, maybe then, if, if I can interject, Chairman, then Alan, maybe when you get that done, you can let me know and I can just let the commissioners know.
Yep, yeah. Cool. Excellent. Thank you. That's, that's the proper channel. Thank you. So, um, moving on, as far as to the public hearing, I think, um, I'm in favor of one, given the amount of abutting property owners there. Uh, give them a chance to, uh, voice their opinions. Uh, Commissioner Wagner, what are your feelings?
I'm, I'm for a public hearing.
Commissioner Paschek?
Uh, yes, for the public hearing.
Commissioner Conway?
Yes, I, I would like to have a public hearing as well.
Okay. So, um, to that effect, I think, Mr. Hinkley, we need a motion and vote on that motion. Application.
You probably want, if you're going to go with a public hearing, you probably want motion one.
Okay. Thank you. For construction, application twenty-two dash oh five for construction of a single family homes in the upland review area at three fifty-nine Church Street and three twenty-one Tremont Street rear. Applicant and owner AA Denofia Building and Development LLC, contact Alan Banjavani. Mr. Secretary, active secretary may have a motion.
Motion option number one. The proposed activity will have a significant impact to, uh, regulated area. It is best interest of the public to hold a public hearing for the applicant. Twenty-two dash zero five to be scheduled for April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, may I have a second? I'll second it, John Bishant. Thank you to my Commissioner Bishant. Just give us, please call the roll.
Benin Connor the third?
Yes.
John Bishant?
Yes.
Bernadette Conway?
Yes.
Alan Paschek?
Yes.
Andrea Segal?
Yes.
Jeff Wagner?
Yes. And just, just so we're all clear, there will, there will be two separate public hearings. There will be one for the map amendment that you will act on, which is independent of this, this application, that would be acted on as well.
Will they be on the same date or on separate dates?
Nope, they're on the same date. Though this will open the one public hearing for the map amendment. You'll go through that. If you choose to close it, you close it and you move on. And then we'll open the next public hearing and do that. So.
Okay, so I guess we're tabled until the public hearing for this application. Thank you very much. Good evening. All right. Uh, moving on to skipping to section seven, public participation on non agenda items. Each speaker limited to two minutes. Mr. Hinkley, is there anyone on the line wishes to speak?
Uh, there's a few people in the room, but no one has their hand raised.
Okay. We shall proceed to section A communications and reports, item A, agent communications. Do you have anything to report this month, Mr. Hinkley?
Um, I think a couple of months ago, we talked about, um, a beaver issue at, uh, Robinbrook condominium. Um, between the condominium and town forces, the beaver dams were removed. The, uh, I'm sorry, the beavers were trapped by the condo association. And the dams were removed under general permit one, uh, by the town engineer and the highway department. He oversaw that. So that issue was taken care of. It dropped the water level like a foot and a half in that area, which was good. So, and they're monitoring for, you know, beavers.
Was there any additional clearing to prevent that area once again being inhabited by beavers? Was there any more preventative action done besides the corrective actions that they're taking?
Um, you know, I guess there, the, the condo associate, the condo is, is going to monitor for, um, you know, uh, beaver activity, you know? Look for, you know, newly downed trees, water backing up, stuff like that. Um, there, there's not, you know, it's not much you can do, you know, if new beavers move into the area, it's kind of tough. So. But they will continue to monitor, I'm told, and they'll talk, they'll reach out to town engineer or myself if there's, uh, future issues and we'll deal with them on a case by case basis.
Thank you. Who's directing the answer, Mr. Hinkley?
Uh, other than that, that's it. Um, just a reminder, I think I sent you guys the, the new link for the training. Um, again, I haven't accessed it yet. Um, I probably sent it to you last month. Um, so it's available. It's free. If you have the time, I think you can do it in, in sections, you don't have to sit through the whole thing in one sitting, you can do different little modules and whatnot. But it's there and available, so.
Um, two separate items, relative to in-person meetings, is there better, is there something that we should discuss this evening as far as?
Yeah, thank you for the reminder, so there is, the land use boards have the option of going back in person. There are a couple of rules. So we have to have at least a quorum seated in the room for in-person meetings. And so at least four of you would always have to be there, others can zoom in if they choose, because it's gonna be a hybrid type of situation. Public will be able to attend and they can also zoom in as well. So it's really up to each commission, each body, how they want to move going forward. If you'd like to move to go to that, we would be able to do next month's meeting. Technically in person or hybrid, what they're calling it, as long as we always have a quorum seated in the town hall.
So I'd like to poll the, the commissioners on that, go ahead, Commissioner Bashant, what's your feeling?
I was just gonna say, that's a tough, kind of a tough road to hoe to get a quorum in there right away. And then you wouldn't know until the meeting actually was about to start, whether you had it or not, so that could get a little bit. You know, take some coordination before the meeting was even, you know, scheduled.
Well, that's why we're kind of talking about it now, so I mean, if everybody's comfortable doing it, we would assume that everyone would show up, you know, you can wear masks in there. So it's really up to what your comfort level inside the, inside the chamber.
Chamber.
Town hall chambers, whatever they're calling.
Sounds like a science fiction.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wagner, what's your thoughts?
I believe we should probably meet in person and let the public, you know, this is, we have a brand new town hall and we don't have public really in that place yet. I believe they have a, a right to be in there and to express their opinions in person, face to face is a little more personal to me, I believe.
Okay, Commissioner Paschowicz?
Yes, I entirely agree with Vice Chair Wagner. And also regarding what Christian Bashan brought up about how are we gonna know someone's gonna show up? Well, I guess it would be best to set a protocol for a certain amount of time. Where if a person on the commission who is not going to attend, then that person would respond. So alleviate everyone else having to think about responding, just the persons that are not going to be attending. Or wish to be on the hybrid. Which is the other. Part of this, but I'm, I'm for going back into the seat, because I think it's more beneficial all around the public and us. Getting together, look at the plans closer together and nothing on a small little cellphone screen like I am right now. That's my take on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Kona, what is your thoughts?
I don't know what it's like to meet in person, obviously, so this has been pretty good overall. Um, I think hybrid would be fine, I, I, I don't mind this too much at all, but whatever you guys want to do, I'm, I'm cool with.
Commissioner Conway?
Thank you, yeah, I, I've never had the pleasure of attending in person either. I've been on here since all during COVID and haven't. Been able to attend in person, so I would like to be able to do that, but I do. Like having the option for a hybrid meeting, I've, I've been sick all week and I'm sick tonight, but I was still able to attend the meeting. Where if it was in person, I, I wouldn't have gone, so. So it's nice to be able to have the hybrid option and I would also. Say we would need to RSVP, let everybody know in advance, you know, if we will be there or not, just so we know whether or not there's going to be the quorum present.
And, and I will be getting a little more clarification next week, we have a meeting with the, with the town clerk and stuff, because a lot of this is driven by state statute requirements as far as the hybrid goes and the quorum in the room and stuff like that. So that's, that's part of what's, what's driving the, the hybrid model rather than just a straight in-person thing right now.
One thing I'm thinking about right now is we do have the public hearing coming up in April. I don't know if you agree with me, I think the, the Zoom call gives the public a little more easier access to us. Especially for the next month's meeting, but I don't know, with that, we want public participation.
So, and, and again, the hybrid, the hybrid option applies to the public as well, so you can have ten people come to the meeting. And five people that can't make it, but they can zoom in and still be heard. So you, you're probably actually gonna reach more people technically, perhaps.
And I assume you will be, just a second, you'll be managing this as you do now, the room as well as the computer, is the?
That's a great question, that's one of the things that has to be discussed. Cause it's, obviously, it's, it's a little different, it's, it's a lot more things, you know. Trying to keep an eye on between people in the, in the room and, and asking questions and seeing who's online, so yes, that's one of the things that's gonna be discussed.
Commissioner Bashant, you had a question?
Yeah, I mean, kind of mixed feelings on that. I was one of the first ones to scream up and down about not having in-person meetings, but I have to admit, I got kind of lazy and eating my dinner behind the scenes over here and stuff, so. But the only thing is, I could see a real issue and I would be curious why that's a requirement to have that quorum in the room, because. Imagine at a public hearing and a lot of people show up and all of a sudden, there's not a quorum in the room and, and then what happens? Then we shut that room down and it's strictly just a Zoom meeting? And is that meeting gonna be televised like they were always, always used to be televised? I guess there's a lot more questions than answers right now.
Yeah, some of those will get answered by the, by the town clerk, but i- if it's a hybrid meeting, it's gonna get streamed, so, like it does now, so anything that, that, any portion of Zoom is gonna get streamed. So, and I believe there's cameras in the, the room as well, that's gonna have all the audience. Because the people on the Zoom screen are gonna be up on a screen, they're gonna be able to view the audience, I'm told. And, and the people in the room will be able to see who's on Zoom, so.
Well, my concern is that you see sometimes we're, you know, don't have a big buffer, a, a deep bench, let's say, of extra people, so we pretty much have to all agree that we're gonna be there.
Yeah, and I, and just so we're all aware, I have requested to both the liaisons to fill all the vacancies that we currently have, and I know they're diligently working on it as best they can. Cause I think there's still an open slot on TPZ as well, so it's, those things are all trying to be addressed going forward.
So, Commissioner Wagner?
I just believe in person is, it makes it more personable, it makes people, when you vote yes or no, you're looking at those people in the face and you're making a good decision, hiding behind a computer. I like in person, also, we were able to talk to each other and share more. It's just a better learning experience in person personally. That's my opinion.
Thank you, thank you for that, Commissioner Wagner. So, Mr. Hinkley, you think you can iron out this logistics before the April meeting, or is that too soon? I think eventually we will go back to in-person meetings, I think that will be the end game here. The question is, do you think you'll have the locks in place to do that?
I believe that, I believe that TPZ intends on having their April meetings in per, you know, as we just described. So that should give me some kind of idea, if you guys. Are a little reticent and you want to see how TPZ goes in April, watch their meetings and you, and you, we can still just go like we are. April, we can do Zoom, and then in May, if you guys are happy with the way TPZ has run, we can just transition in May, if you, if you prefer, I mean, it's really.
I'm leaning that way, I am sort of leaning that way myself, but the end game is to go back to in person. Targeting the May meeting. Commissioner Wagner, Commissioner Paschowicz, are you okay with that, would that be? We're targeting.
Yeah, Commissioner Paschowicz. Here, I'd like to speak to that, I have been attending other Zoom meetings in different universities internationally that have hybrids. And it's been working out well over the last few months, so I, I believe live, we should go live again and keep the hybrid intact.
Well, be in person and online, is Mr. Pat, Christian Paschowicz, is that my understanding?
Yes.
So. I'm, I can go either way, I'm, I have no preference, I'm really neutral on this, so.
You know, I guess we could look at it too as, even if we don't have a, a quorum in the room, we'll say, you know, on some given nights. I don't necessarily know who's gonna, you know, if somebody has emergency on the way here, we may not have a quorum and a meeting would have to be canceled, I mean.
I am concerned about these, this one application we have opened and the clock is ticking.
Yes.
On that application, and I don't want to miss step, you know, that we, it's an embarrassment to the commission, that's what I'm concerned about, cause this. This, the one, a new business has to be settled and I don't want, everybody understands, a misstep that we don't have a quorum at the town hall, that's, that's, that's key, that's what my concern is. So we have to keep going. What about town council, what's the town council doing, Mr. Hinkley?
I believe Mr. Drake will answer that, but I believe they've started the hybrid type of situation.
Yes, we have started the hybrid. And actually. It, personally, I, I believe it's a better option, particularly when you're having public hearings, I mean. The pub, for Culver Street, quite frankly, there was an awful lot of uproar, our people wanted, you know, public hearings in person, in person, and I think for the public's sake. The in-person is, is preferred. But the hybrid option does work well, because it offers everybody an opportunity for whatever their situation is on that particular night. I will say though, in terms of. Face-to-face discussions with the commissioner, each commissioner to commissioner, once you get in there and you see, it's not quite a horseshoe. It's, it's not sitting across from each other at a table where you can really have a discussion, you're, you're all gonna be straining your necks to try and talk to each other to see who's, who's raising their hands. It's, it's a little disappointing in that way, because it's really not facilitating a commission or council discussion with the members of the commission or the council. But in terms of, again, going face-to-face, it, going back to in-person, it has worked well, of course, we've always had James, the town clerk, there to handle the technical difficulties. But don't you agree, Kim, that it's worked?
I think it has, and I think we. We've all agreed that we prefer the in-person option, have, having the hybrid is great. Because it does offer people who either don't have mobility or don't have the capacity to come out to town hall to be able to participate, which is really important. And I will echo what Counselor Bedraco said, that the way that the seating has been built, it is a little bit different. We, we find ourselves rolling forward and backward and leaning and, and trying to make sure that we see one another. That said. It's not that much of a handicap. And having that space open and the only, the only concern I, I would raise is you have, it seems you have a requirement that there has to be. The. That's what I'm trying to think of.
Quorum?
You have to have a quorum. So it would mean, again, making sure that you have the quorum and that at the last minute, the meeting doesn't get canceled. Especially when you have these important public hearings that are coming up.
Right, exactly, and, and I will verify that the quorum thing with, with the town clerk, but I believe that's what I recall, but I, I could be mistaken, but I will definitely verify that.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I was gonna ask Counselor Bedraco, are you guys required to have a quorum or have you had to have a quorum in your meetings?
I actually do recall that James saying something about. You have to have, somebody, you have to have a quorum and then you have to wait like a half hour or something, if, actually, if somebody leaves the room or, and, and the quorum is no longer there, you have to wait a half hour before you restart again. There's some pretty funky regulations, so yeah, it'd be best if Eric can just confirm that.
Okay, cause I, I thought I saw one of the meetings, it didn't look like you had a quorum, but maybe I was, maybe I, maybe somebody had left their room or something, I don't know. All right, thank you.
Okay, so Eric, next meeting. We'll, we'll need a quorum in person, I guess that's going, that seems to be the. The majority opinion, let's. Let's play on that for the April meeting.
All right, so if, if something comes up.
Barring any logistical barrier that you, you, that comes up, crops up, let, let's, at least four of us in person on the April nineteenth meeting.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
And thanks for reminding about that, I forgot about that.
Um, there is one other thing, something to think about, we're not gonna jump on this, but. That training we had back in January. About when we had that clear or the app, what was the name of that?
It was the Land Use Academy.
Right. And, you know, there was an application that came through. I guess we were a little flat-footed as far as what was the environmental impact, so on and so forth. Obviously, we always want a, a third-party opinion, but they need time in order to do that, they, they don't want to get into any conflict or, you know, battle with an applicant in the town. They like to need some time to look at the property, they want any, they want a no-pressure situation. So one thing that is being considered is to take a look at various parcels in town. And maybe put ourselves in line to look at a certain parcel that is not developed, that is open space. And have them come in and do an assessment prior to that particular parcel being targeted for development, okay? We have to take a look at the map and. Have them do this sort of a proactive stance versus waiting for the application to be pending, and then there's just not enough time to get an assessment, a third-party assessment, so. I think, maybe not next month, but sure, just something to think about identifying parcel or parcels that are open space that. One parcel is, is the, whoever owns the property is willing to give access to the. To this organization, to the. Land Development Use Commission for their folks to come in and do an evaluation, that's a condition, so. Something to think about, I'll be thinking about next couple of months. But I welcome comments to that regard.
Well, I, I can just clarify a, a little thing, and what, and what this is, is basically to identify undeveloped properties in town. That potentially could be open space for the town if we chose to get a negotiation or whatever, and we can. Not hire, but the, through CLEAR, the old environmental review team, like that worked on Cedar Mountain, will come out and evaluate a property. And, and, and give you all the information, you know, and then, you know, that way you, we know about it beforehand. And if something in the interim comes up for development, you have that report A in front of you, or it's possible you could use it to negotiate, to acquire it, if possible. So, and I think we're just having the commission think about it, look at a map and, and maybe you guys come up with a half a dozen parcels and I can look into them and see, you know, what. What may be viable, what actually has wetlands on them, stuff like that, cause you know, this hat is really the conservation commission hat, what these parcels you're looking at now, some of them may have wetlands on them. But it's, it's really something along those lines. If that helps.
Bishop Bashant, thank you.
Yeah, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but were you talking about any, you were, I thought you were referring to any undeveloped parcel, but Eric seems to be leaning towards just open space parcels or parcels.
Undeveloped parcel in town, that the town doesn't have control of, we'll say.
Yeah, I could imagine that would be a little tough, but.
All right, I mean, because the, the, you have to get permission from the owner, obviously. All right, I mean, because the, the, you have to get permission from the owner, obviously, and if if they're thinking of getting it developed, they probably won't want us on there. But you never know, so.
Commissioner Conway?
Yes, when we were meeting regularly for the Open Space Committee, we had identified some parcels of land that we, you know, we would be interested in as open space for the town, so if you go back and and look through the Open Space Committee meeting notes, you should be able to, there's, there is, I think we prioritize them and and you'll be able to get a list easily that way.
Mr. Hankley, can you take that action, Miss Conway to at least get that, I'm not.
Yeah, I can, I can go through the open space minutes to see if I can find any kind of list. I mean, I'm sure Dale was on the open space or is on the open space, so.
Actually, I had, I had told Renata, because I guess she started some of the discussions about I'm really not quite sure whether it was followed through on or not, but I'll look through all my minutes and get you the list, but like, you know, Bernadette said, there were about, we went through every undeveloped parcel in town that was substantial. So it'll be a very valuable list for this endeavor.
Now, it's been a few years since the Open Space Committee has met and identified these properties, so whenever it was, but that was one of the last actions that we took as a committee, so right before I'm gonna say probably 2019 is, would be a good place to start.
Right, because you guys meet quarterly, right?
Right, well.
Yeah, okay.
Do some research and send you some stuff, Eric.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Conway, thank you, Counselor Budraco. All right. I think that's it under Communications, Agent Communications. Item B, Town Council Liaison Communications. Commissioner Jacob, go first.
Yeah, I, well, basically, the past couple of weeks and the next few meetings are focused on the budget. So that's primarily been the council activity. Another action which we took, which is in process now, is the charter, we we formed, we formed a charter review commission, because the last time the town charter has been, was reviewed was about 10 years ago. So it's a five-member commission, I believe, and they're meeting now, actually, tonight was, they had a meeting at 6:30 to go through the charter and make any suggestions for possible revisions, and it'll be brought to the town council for action, and then after that, there will have to be a pub, a referendum on any changes we made to the charter, but that's something that happens you know, very infrequently, but it's a very important document, so keep your eyes on that. I don't know if you have anything else, Kim?
Thing that we've worked on is a review of our town council policies, and that was done. And it's completed, otherwise, I don't have anything to add to Counselor Budraco's report.
Is there anything you change, as you think that will affect the Inland Western Conservation Commission? These these proposed changes, is anything that may impact this commission in particular?
Do you mean in terms of the charter revision?
Yes.
I'm so, thanks, so, well, actually, no, I don't even think it's gonna affect this commission. They're looking at a few commissions, I think, for, in terms of membership. The numbers of members, but I don't believe conservation was mentioned. But nothing struck me that was gonna be impacting the land use commissions. There are things that, things that were suggested, and again, these are just suggestions, but it's the commission itself that has the power. Was, you know, changing the dollar amount for required referendums, possibly looking at oh gosh, residency requirements, cleaning for certain positions, cleaning up language that, because one thing I, and I can't remember actually what the issue is, my mind's going blank. Oh, the land, the land acquisition fund. Which last year, we finally started putting some money into it, but there was a big discussion on what the, what it said the town council may put money into the, versus the town council shall, versus the town council will, so they're gonna be going through the looking at language, language, possible areas of confusion. Nothing huge has jumped out from the suggestions that came through at this point. But again, there'll be another public hearing. They had one public hearing, and I think only one person spoke or whatever. They're having their meetings now, and I believe there's gonna be another public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, counselors, Roda and Betrico. Nothing else, we'll move on to item C, Pond Life Research and Education. Commissioner Paskevich, do you have anything to report this month?
Well, yes, actually, I can backtrack a little bit on things that have been brought to my attention internationally, which, you know, refer to our town because we're part of the international community. Biodiversity has been, become a more diverse topic in in nations around the world, as you know, and most recently, the Italian state in parliament came to a vote to mandate a law to protect the environment as part of its constitution, which to me is a large, you know, segment of the law is the constitution, which we have ourselves, which means the state must safeguard ecosystems and biodiversity in interest of future generation, which I think we've been pounding on in education in these meetings and other meetings, you know, the towns, is, we're always, we're working for the future generations, not just the current status of what we're working on today at this meeting. Another topic, which, you know, I've been kind of imposing on during the Culver Street application on bees. And someone has developed in another country a brick to be placed in building construction, in a building that attracts bees as their home. It would have been great if I had found this out, or this had brought my attention when this town hall was being constructed. There could have been plantings around the town hall as well to attract, is what we're speaking to, like the Culver Street project. And so there's a lot of new things coming out, you know, that I'm interested in, I hope you all are too. It's, it is changing and innovative. That's all I have to bring up tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Paskevich. If there's nothing else, we are, item nine adjournment, may have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Wagner?
Move by, so move by, Commissioner Wagner may have a second.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Bashant, all in favor? Opposed? None. Enjoy your evening, see you in April.
All right, good night, everyone.
Eric, how did we actually leave that for the meeting? Is it gonna be in person or?
That's the intent, yes, if something else happens, I'll let you know, but that's the intent. All right, good night, everybody.
All right, good night.